Good evening, how's everybody tonight? You doing well? Now, I'm a preacher, so I'm gonna ask you again, because that wasn't good enough. Everybody doing alright tonight? We're a little bit of a charismatic house at Rejuvenate, so you can, if you need to run, you can run, whatever. Listen, I really appreciate you being here and being a part of this tonight, and we are, this is live on our Facebook and YouTube and our online platform, so if you've got your phones right now, it'd really mean a lot to us if you go to our page and shoot this out, because there may be people that might be working right now and can't be here and be a part of this, that would love to see it, and so I just encourage you to do that. Go find our Facebook page and shoot it out, or you can invite somebody to go to rejuvenate.live, and they can watch from there as well. They can even interact. We've got online care pastors that can field their questions and get those questions to us if they've got questions online, so just do me a favor and make sure that's shared. I wanna kinda just preface tonight a little bit that it's not really about its platform, it's about you, and it's about you being able to ask your questions, and these gentlemen that are with us, just responding from their training, their knowledge, their heart, and just giving you a little insight as to who they are as individuals and also their department. I believe that, for the most part, that attitude reflects leadership, that leadership becomes paramount, and that things filter down from the leader, and so I just thought it was important for you guys to get face-to-face with these two gentlemen, and the whole idea is that we're obviously in a place right now culturally where, you know, tension has been really high, and we've been in the COVID deal, and we are already stressed out about that, and then all of a sudden, you know, we begin to be unsettled as a nation, and this rejuvenate church is a very multi-diverse church, and I care about us being able to operate in unity and in oneness, and so I guess I just begin to kind of evaluate with God a little bit. We don't have the ability to necessarily do something in Tennessee and Texas and everywhere else, but what can we do in Anderson to at least, you know, let the people that we know and that we care about feel like, hey, this is a great place to live? And so that was just kinda my thing, is that God began to deal with me a couple of weeks back, and I don't promote my preaching, but I would really encourage everybody to watch last Wednesday. I talked about just listening, and really just looked at things from heaven down instead of earth up, and I think it's important that we really become very good at the concept of listening to people. This is not just in this season, but I think this is a way of life, that we become better listeners than we are talkers, and generally, we listen simply so we can develop a response, and sometimes we need to just listen to listen, and really give, and we're in a church, I'm gonna speak a little bit that way, give room to the Holy Spirit to begin to reveal some understanding about who we're listening to, so that we can really get to the heart of the matter, and so this kinda was birthed out of that, that I thought, hey, this would be great for them to listen to you, and then to give them an opportunity for you to listen to them, and that through this, you could ask your tough questions. You could ask the questions that you wanna know, that make you feel trustworthy and secure about the community that we live in, and that you feel safe traveling about, you feel safe walking the streets, you feel safe dealing with law enforcement, and recognize that even though we have our issues, we really have a pretty good thing in Anderson. And so I would, I'd love for you to do me a favor and just really quick, celebrate these two gentlemen for giving their time to us tonight. I know I get to see Chief Stewart every now and then, working on the Dream Team in Anderson, and this is actually something that we do quite regularly, is have conversations and activity about this very thing, and so we see each other at least once a month generally with that, and been able to work on that with him for the last several years. This guy right here, we actually know each other back from like middle school, and I've known him for quite a while, so these two men, I believe their activity, their work speaks for himself, their character speaks for themselves, but these are two great men, and I'm grateful that they're a part of our community. I congratulate Sheriff McBride on his recent reelection, and just... So I wanna turn it over to them, and just give them an opportunity to say, hey, an intro, anything they might wanna share, and they're gonna take about five minutes to do that, and then we're gonna flip right to Pastor Kelby, who is gonna be our moderator. Let me also let you see the person who's the best-looking on the panel. This is Tanya Chester, she is our Worship Pastor at Rejuvenate Church. I really appreciate her being up here with us and just representing the night. Chief Stewart, why don't you start us off, man?
Okay, everybody hear me? I'll make sure I'm loud enough. For those of you that don't know me, so I've been with the city for quite a while now. In fact, we were just talking a few minutes ago, and today's the 17th. June 19th, I hit my anniversary with the city, so this is 29 years. Just share with you a little bit what I've done. Started here as a patrol officer, also worked as a dispatcher, did K-9 for like three and a half years, gave my dog up as I got promoted to sergeant, so I managed to shift. I went upstairs to investigation, because I thought that was a little bit better. Was a detective for about three and a half years, one of the best jobs I had, except for a K-9 handler, that was awesome. Chief Brown came to the city in 2006, and I went back to the road as a lieutenant over shift. Only did that very shortly, for about a year and a half. Got promoted to patrol captain over the uniform officers, and my last stop was as, over the detention center, as the jail administrator. So, just sharing that with you, because it lets you know a little bit about my experience. It kinda covers all the facets of law enforcement, and only two things I hadn't never done are narcotics and school resource officer. Got three children, love 'em, can't be a school resource officer, I just can't do it. So, I know y'all are full of questions, I talked with Jason before we started, and you know, I looked over the president's order and a few things, and instead of rambling on that, because I think y'all are gonna have questions on that for both of us, I'm gonna pass it on to the sheriff. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening. So, glad to be with everybody. A little bit about myself, yes, we just got through reelection, glad that's over, so that is, you know, as if we don't have enough stressful stuff going on in the world around us right now as it is, and so I got one thing off my plate for sure, but if we can just, we can gain some peace throughout the United States, and then also hopefully get COVID-19 out of here sooner than later, that's incredibly tasking as it is. So, I started my career in 2001, you know, I'm about the same age as Chief's been policing, I guess, no, I'm just kidding, I'm 41, so, I was like 11 when he started, so, but started the sheriff's office 2001, worked for several sheriffs, and I did uniform patrol myself, investigations, was a detective for several years, enjoyed doing that. After that, I went to Internal Affairs. If you're not familiar with Internal, I was actually the first Internal Affairs investigator at Anderson County Sheriff's Office, so Internal Affairs is obviously the internal review, kinda policing the police, if you will, investigating some of our own, it's very interesting, at times very tough job, and from there, I went to do a lot of public relations stuff, PIO and all that for the sheriff's office. Then I took a short hiatus, went to work at a church, New Spring Church, and was there for a little less than three years, but it was a good, it was a good break for me from law enforcement, and I enjoyed, you know, I enjoyed what I felt like was my calling at the time, and trying to reach people for the Lord. I still feel like that's my number-one calling, more so than anything else that I do. Also feel like being in law enforcement's a calling, just like being a pastor or anything else, I think, you know, whatever people decide to do, if they're following the Lord's plan for them, it's a calling, so. But anyway, I've been the sheriff now for about three and a half years, and of course, finishing up this term will be in December, four years, and then I'll get to start another term for four years, and I love where we live, I think we live in a great place, certainly we are not, you know, resistant to problems ourselves, but I think that, you know, we just, seeing the environment we are in here in Anderson compared to some of the other environments, I'm very thankful about where we live and the people that represent all of our communities here, because I think we have some of the best communities, definitely in this state, and probably, if not, the whole United States, so. Married, three girls, y'all pray for me, I have three daughters, so, and the youngest had her tonsils and adenoids taken out this morning, so she's been fighting everybody like a drunk sailor pretty much all day, and was so angry this morning when she woke up from the anesthesia, and she ripped out her IV and all that good stuff, so she's kinda ornery, she's five years old, and God bless her, she's got red hair, so, that's where the problem is, so. But anyway, it's just an honor to be here tonight, you know, full transparency here, okay? I don't know what you're gonna be asking, I have no idea, and I'll be completely coming to you from the heart, and, you know, I haven't walked a mile in everybody's shoes, I have not, okay? So, you know, I can say that, obviously I have not, but not everybody's been in law enforcement's shoes either, and so I think this is a great opportunity for good dialogue, and I'm here to listen, God gave me two ears, and so I wanna hear what your thoughts are and what your concerns are, and if anything, is try to make our sheriff's office the best place it can be to serve our community, and continue to build upon that, so. Thanks for having me, Pastor Jason.
Absolutely.
Oh, I will say this, forgot about Jason. He was my high school quarterback, I was one of his offensive linemen, so, he was okay. Mediocre at best, I'm just kidding.
If I'd've known he was gonna say that, I wouldn't have gave you a microphone.
No, he was good, he was good, we were real proud of him, and he was a good quarterback, and we go back a long way, so glad to be here.
Yeah, one more time, can you celebrate these guys? Let me turn it over to this amazing young fellow right here, this is our student Pastor Kelby McNabb, and Pastor Kelby is gonna moderate for us tonight. Let me give a little bit of the format, so you guys, when you walked in, you were given cards with the opportunity to write questions, he's got some of those, he's gonna be asking some of those questions, they're gonna field that. If that stirs more questions, okay, at the end of this thing, towards the end of this thing, that's what these microphones are gonna be for, towards the end, we'll turn it over to an open mic type Q&amp;A, and you'll have the opportunity to ask questions from the microphones towards the end, if there are more things that are, that percolate in your mind from the conversation it's had, so let me turn it over to Pastor Kelby. If you have cards still with questions on it, lift those things up, and we're gonna have people come around and take those from you. Pastor Kelby, go ahead, my friend.
All right, good evening, everybody. Y'all doing alright? Super excited to be here, so tonight's gonna work, just like as Pastor Jason explained, we're gonna try to get to as much questions as possible, but keep in mind that we're not gonna get everybody's question, there's a lot of people in here, and depending on how long the discussion could go for one question, it's just, we're not gonna be able to reach every person's question, so if you really have a question that you really want to ask Sheriff McBride and Chief Stewart, then please, after we get done, come up here and ask that question. Sounds good? All right. We have some opening questions that we're gonna start off with, and I would like if both of you answered, you know, we can start with you, Sheriff McBride, and then after, Chief Stewart, you can answer. So here's our first question, it is, what are the current sentiments regarding the unrest between police in the black community?
So, you know, right now, what I see is heartbreaking everywhere, and, you know, it's tough, because, you know, you see actions and misconduct by certain officers in certain locations, and you, it definitely puts out a negative light on law enforcement. Law enforcement to me is a very honorable profession, I take it seriously, and it's an honor to serve all people, as we should, and it shouldn't just be there to serve some people, and so I take law and order very seriously, so, you know, seeing what I'm seeing now, and as a result of, you know, some very senseless acts by law enforcement, where law enforcement as a whole is paying the price, but I think that it's hard to, you know, like I said a while ago when I was opening, everybody hasn't had an opportunity to walk in everybody's shoes, and so dialogue is what we need, and being able to hear how people feel about it. I know how I feel about it, and it's tough, and it weighs heavy on my heart, but also I don't have everybody's perspective on it either, so.
I'll just share with you, so we've started a thing, and it's really, has to do more with COVID, but we started it before COVID happened, but if you see us, our officers are out in the community doing our roll call, and you see us out there somewhere in the neighborhoods, we don't choose which neighborhoods, we try to go to all the neighborhoods, in fact, we're trying to hit all the city parks, so I'm kinda telling you that, so like, when you're going down the road, and you see a police car, how many people slow down? Anybody? Do you look over to see if it's Sheriff McBride in that patrol car before you slow down, or you just automatically slow down, right? So, this is why I tell the guys at Roll Call, I'll try to explain this, just as a good scenario, because when one officer does one tragic thing, it paints all of us into that same picture, and we answer those calls, we get out on the call, and as soon as we get out of the car, somebody's like, don't shoot, and you know, that didn't even happen here, it happened, you know, far away from here, but we all get painted in that same picture. So, with the community, this is what we tell, when you go out and you answer that call today, answer that call like it's the first time that person's ever had contact with police in their life, because you know how we handled that call right then, that day? You're gonna judge us the rest of your life on how we handled that call, and be the first time you ever called the law enforcement. So, you know, what we try to say is just be professional, not everybody's gonna act professional, I mean, we're in law enforcement, half the time when we get called out to a scene, it's because somebody's violating the law, right? So, you know, everybody's gonna act professional, be professional.
Thank you, guys. Our second question is, what are your plans to create a culture of community policing?
Okay. So, this is something we've been working on since I came in three and a half years ago, and we have, you know, we've had an opportunity to partner with the city some, with some of their endeavors, but we have a lot of other community groups and civic groups throughout the county, you know, where we have been trying to form relationships and build relationships with all communities, you know, not just specifically one certain community, but all communities, and trying to bridge the gap. There's a lot of communities, and it doesn't have to be black or white, there's a lot of communities that are very diverse, but also maybe more in, you know, on the poverty side versus, you know, and so we have done a lot of outreach, we've tried to make ourselves as an office more transparent, we've tried to, you know, we're utilizing social media more, that seems to be the tempo of communication these days, so trying to utilize social media and that platform as much as we can, to show people what we're doing, what we're achieving, you know, who we need to be on the lookout for, whatever, and, but we have partnered with a lot of churches, and a lot of different churches, and we've gone and, you know, done, I mean, I can't tell you all the different topics, but we try to get out there as much as possible, and put ourselves out there, especially the churches, and you know, and that's something that's free, by the way, we don't, you know, that's something you already pay for with tax dollars, so, but we try to engage, and churches seems to be one of the best vehicles to do that, with the churches, and so whether it's, you know, talking about things like this, you know, how the sheriff's office can serve the community better, the active shooter, all that stuff, we try to engage, and also we have a Citizens Academy, and I'm gonna put this plug out here, so, because we need more people in the Citizens Academy. Citizens Academy, we're not gonna, you know, it's not like basic training, we're not gonna make you run a mile and do push-ups every day, and learn defensive tactics and all that stuff, but it is a, it's a Citizens Academy, we do it one night a week for 10 weeks, and it's really a way that you get to come in and see, like I said before, full transparency about what we do, why we do it, how we train, what kinda training we offer our people, what kind of equipment we have, and it's good for you to know that, because as a taxpayer in Anderson County, you need to know how your tax dollars are being spent, so the Citizens Academy is a great way to do that. I would encourage you to, you know, follow us on Facebook, of course, and if you do that, watch out for the Citizens Academy dates, because we'd love to have you, we'd love to put you through that program, and that's, I think that is another unique way that you can kinda see for 10 weeks, you know, why we do things, how we do things, how we train, and, you know, we learn from the citizens that go through the academy too, and we get a lot of, you know, a lot of good feedback from them that helps us better what we're doing.
Chief?
Well, this gives me a little bit of opportunity, and the sheriff has the whole county, so the city is a little bit smaller. In 2014, Dr. Thompson started this team, it's called the Dream Team, has anybody ever heard of it? We've been in the paper a couple of times, and so Jason's on that, I got two in the back, one over on the side that are here tonight, I appreciate that. We kinda started it as a purpose, you know, we saw what happened in Ferguson in 2013, so we started this in 2014, and it didn't start out pretty to begin with, there were a lot of questions that were asked, you know, why, why when I got stopped, why did they end up searching my car, and, you know, just some follow-up questions, and we told, you know, the community, like, this is what happened, we found out, this is why they searched the car, dah dah dah. But the Dream Team for us is a way for us to connect with the community. Started out with about eight pastors, and I think now we got about like 20 pastors on there. The good thing is, you know, I give them my cell phone number, so when there's issues in the community, they connect with me. The good thing for me is I have all those 20 pastors phone numbers too, so, you know, that's a two-way street. We do fun stuff with the churches, we've done ice cream with a cop, the very first one we ever did was at the church right down off West Market Street, and so when I came in, I went in, I sat down right in the middle of the pew with all the kids, because we didn't know how this was gonna go. Before I left, the kid was on my leg, I was dragging him out, he didn't want me to leave, so that's what we were wanting, you know, kinda break down those barriers a little bit, we do some fun stuff like trunk or treat, and we've done some tough stuff too, like we've, with this group of people, we went out to West Side, we went to Hannah, and you know, we have like the student leaders that are there, and I'm not talking about student government leaders, I'm talking about the leaders that are in the school that kinda lead the school, they don't necessarily have to have the best grades or stay in trouble a lot, but they're the ones who kinda, you know, set the standard of how the school's going, and, you know, we heard some things, and we went to all the alternative school too, and this one was the best, because, you know, I'm sitting there, and this little girl asked me, she's like, I don't know why you writing that stuff down, because if you ain't gonna do anything about it, don't even bother writing it down, and I told her, I was like, look, I said, if I'm writing it down, I'm listening to you, and so this young lady, who was very militant, when I first went in there, didn't even want me to even be there, other than she was getting a free lunch that day, she, by the end of that day, she took her picture with me. So, you know, if we can change just like one thing or one person, we know that that team is working. We've kinda been an example for the state, we got a Public Safety Award from Municipal Association for that, so, you know, we wanna share that and bring that to other communities, but that little emphasis there that we're doing like here, I know in our immediate Anderson area, they were a big part in our protest last week, all the members of the Dream Team were there in the audience, so we know that's working, you know, it's like Sheriff said, you know, we're part of your community, I serve as an elder at my church, our officers coach baseball teams, they, they're very involved, we do a lot of stuff in the schools, we're not just, you know, as I told one of the reporters a while ago, you know, we throw this uniform on to go to work, then we go home and be part of the community, so that's what we wanna do. Thanks.
Thank you, guys, and I've also actually, Pastor Jason has taken me downtown during a couple of the Dream Team meetings, and it was really eye-opening, we got to do some training, and it was really interesting, and super proud that we have that going on. I'm gonna switch over here to this side, so y'all don't feel lonely over here. All right, our next question is, and Sheriff, you can open up, how is Anderson County Police Department preventing racial profiling?
I think that starts at the, with the hiring process, and I think it's very important that as we hire, and I'm gonna be honest with you, right now, you know, our agency is almost fully staffed, we have, we feel like we've got a really good thing going, but nationwide, we're seeing law enforcement, I think law enforcement trends in 2018, applications for law enforcement were down 65%, so, you know, we don't wanna see that trend continue because you have less good people to choose from, but I think a lot of problems can be solved through your hiring process. Now, I will say this, you never know what's in somebody's heart, you just have no idea, only God knows that, but we do our very best to really vet our potential candidates, whether they're coming to us, maybe they've moved, and, you know, their spouse got a new job or something, and they're looking, they're certified, or if it's somebody we have to send to the academy, that is, and I think that is where we've picked up a lot of momentum, is by the vetting process that we do, and it takes months. If you wanna work for the sheriff's office, it's gonna be a vetting process that takes months, and some people aren't patient enough to do that, but that's where it starts, and then I think, you know, I mean, this, you know, our community is rich with churches and church groups and church activities, we're very blessed to live where we live in the country, because it's not like this everywhere in the country, and we, and there's a lot of places that's very hard, it's probably a lot harder to worship like we do here, and so I think the churches impact a lot of who our officers are, because like the chief said, you know, our guys and gals live here in this community too, they're part of the community, and they pay taxes, and they go to church, and they, you know, spend money at local businesses and everything else, so, but, you know, for us, that's where it starts, and also maintaining integrity as far as their work ethic within the sheriff's office, you know, we have a early warning system where, you know, if an officer is involved in a situation, there's a misconduct allegation or whatever, red flag pops up, we monitor those early warning systems, and we scrutinize over those early warning systems, and we're very, very mindful of those, and those work, and they have worked for us, and I think, so some of the practices we have in place to monitor our folks, and if you have a problem person or a bad apple, it's, you need to be very quick to eliminate that problem within your office, because it will certainly cause a cancer within your department, there's no doubt about it. If I can, I'm gonna mention something that I'm seeing up in other places, specifically the Minneapolis officer, which I can't even think of his name right now, with the George Floyd incident, but the officer that was involved in that incident, and I have not seen this on paper, I've only heard this, but I heard that he had 17 or 18 complaints on him, so probably red flags that have popped up. Well, you know, why? Why did it get past the second one, or the third one, maybe? You know, if you have a red flag that pops up, or maybe two, it could be a training issue, and so sometimes when you put those people and retrain them, and it corrects those issues, but to have 17 or 18, and one thing that places like Minneapolis and Chicago and New York have that we don't have is unions, and I don't, I don't think unions are necessarily a good thing, I know we may have some UPS guys in here or something that work for, you know, that have a union, and I'm sure there's pros and cons to it, but I will tell you this, from hearing, especially when I was in Internal Affairs and went to some Internal Affairs schools, and hearing the guys specifically from out west or up north, they were constantly battling, when they would investigate an officer and recommend termination or something like that, the lawyers, the high-dollar lawyers that work for the unions would outlawry any police department lawyer, and you couldn't get rid of them, you just can't get rid of them, and, and so I see that that is a problem that we don't have here, because, you know, this is a right-to-work state, and of course, you know, the employer has rights here that can terminate somebody, you know, not unjustly, of course, but, you know, with just cause, and when you start having those... but, you know, with just cause. And when you start having those issues pop up, they need to be dealt with, unlike, and of course, you know, this, this may, some of these events may change some of those unionized departments to where that, because a lot of folks probably haven't really thought about that, but that's, I promise you, that's one of the major issues with that.
Thank you. Chief?
Well, you know, first, I'll just say, as regards to profiling period, that's not tolerated. One, you know, we go through training once a year. We cover all this over and over in our full day of training. But the most important thing, and Sheriff too, we both have internal affairs officers, so there's a process in place for you to come make that complaint, for us to look at it. But you can't just like say, you know, you're mad, let's broadcast all this on social media, whatnot, just, you know, come and talk to us. We have a full-time officer, I think both of us now have full-time officers, that, that's their job, internal affairs. You know, not only does our internal affairs, you know, take the complaints, but he also looks over our use-of-force reports that are turned in every day, vehicle pursuit reports, and the IA complaints. I will tell you, so for us, what has been the biggest tool for us, probably, it was before I made chief, 2010, 2009, it was our body cameras. So every one of our officers has a body camera, including myself. And I'll share with you, wearing it tonight. It's not turned on. The body camera's been a great tool for us. We went from different policies where officers recorded for different types of crime they required to now where they have to turn it on every time they get out of the car. I know that there's been talk nationwide about having these things on all day long, 12 hours while we're working. I'm not sure that's the answer, but every call has to be recorded. Not only that, and we have the dash cameras in our cars. We pull those, you know, sometimes when the complaints have come in, we're sitting there talking with somebody, and we know, we know who our bad apples are, we know who our good people are, and we say, you know, I've even swiveled my chair around and said, "Let's watch this body camera right now." What? There's body camera? I didn't know this was being recorded, and people just got up and left and walked out of the office. On the other hand, I have watched body cameras that really upset me, so much that, you know, we terminated somebody right there on the spot. So you can go from having a really bad day to not a job with us anymore. We don't have to go through a process of a written warning, or a suspension, or just easy verbal counseling, you know. We can cut you loose right quick. And we usually see that, I think Sheriff agree with me, that within the first three or four years, you see who's cut out for this. It's a calling. Usually those people weed themselves out. We don't even have to do that. But there are times that we have had to make terminations, and if we do hold on to those people, it comes back on us as administrators, because you can get sued for negligent retention. If you know that this, like the sheriff's talking about, the guy in Minneapolis, if you know this guy has done so much, and you're still holding on to him, then you're gonna own that. And Sheriff, we, one more thing. So the academy has kind of put this back on us, with Chief Keel out of SLED. So let's say I have a bad apple. I get rid of him, he's terminated, but I don't really report that to the academy. I only say it's a policy violation, when I should have reported that it was dishonesty, or excessive force, or drug use, or alcohol use. And he goes to work for the sheriff's office and does the same exact thing that he did here. So we hold that ball now, and we can be sued civilly for allowing this officer to remain in law enforcement. So you can guarantee, and I know I'm not gonna do that, and the sheriff's not gonna do that, I know, we're not gonna do that. So we have both ourselves, I know we did some people out of this job that did not belong here. So, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. For the sake of time, we are now going to ask the questions, but instead of both you answering, we're gonna let you decide who should answer the question. We'll leave that up to you guys. So our next question is, what are the incentives to encourage effective policing? Getting rid of bad apples is a must, but are just and legal practices supported financially, culturally, and socially within the county and the city?
Read that first question, the first part of that again.
Here's the main thing. It says, "What are the incentives to encourage effective policing?"
Well, you know, I will tell you, and Sheriff, the answer too, we never got in this job to get rich. You know, we got in this job to put bad people in jail, to protect those who could not protect themselves. We have an awful lot of people in this county that are doing that job every day. You know, there's incentives. Money is an incentive. We fight against like First Quality in Bosch and Michelin all the time. We lose some officers to there, and we just try to provide the best equipment we can provide for our officers, the best training that we can get, and, you know, just try to be professional.
I would, just real quick, I would ditto that. I think pay is a big deal, because, you know, lower pay, you seem to have a lot more issues. And so we've been, you know, actively getting the pay up for the last three and a half years, and we had officers that were, you know, when I came in, we actually had deputies that were on food stamps, getting government assistance, because, you know, they may have two kids at the house, but it was way cheaper. Everybody knows how expensive daycare is. It was just way cheaper for the, you know, the spouse to be home with the kids, and so. But we've got our pay up significantly. I think when you, when you can pay, you can afford to hire the best possible candidates, and you're not left with, you know, who's gonna work here because it's the lowest paid agency in the upstate. And so I think that definitely helps. But I think, I think the incentives also is, is just doing the right thing. And I will say this about the younger generation. I know we give the younger generation a hard time a lot of times, but, you know, we're past the millennial generation now in hiring. Now we're hiring Generation Z, I think, right? Is that right? Y'all correct me if I'm wrong, Y or Z, I don't know. The thing is, so those kids are somewhere from, you know, because you have to be 21 to be an officer, so 21 to 25. And, you know, when I noticed what we saw in Minneapolis, I saw, and actually I saw a bunch of city officers, county deputies getting on social media, and just putting out there themselves, this is, this is all kinds of wrong. We do not agree with this. We don't police like this. This is not us. Please don't, you know, please don't let this be your view of, a negative view of law enforcement. This is not how we do things, and, you know. And so I think a lot of the incentive now with the younger generation is they, they see the difference they're making, and that incentivizes even more to keep going, moral, you know, doing the moral, the good moral aspect of the job too, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. You can choose whoever wants to answer this one. From your perspective, why do you think minorities fear cops, and why is there a lack of trust?
I'll just say, this is what I said at the speech downtown. You know, I'm a white male. I will never truly understand what it feels to walk in the shoes of a black male. I'm just not gonna. I can say that, and it would be lip service, and say, "I understand that," but I really don't, you know. I do know that we can work together as a community, and we can accomplish a lot more when we work together. We see how divisive our nation has been, and we haven't had that here in Anderson. This forum right here, this is how we fix stuff like this, by talking, you know. Sheriff said, you know, that's the reason God gave us two ears and one mouth. So, just working together.
Thank you. Sheriff?
That's, I mean, that's a tough question, because just like the chief, and I mentioned earlier, I haven't walked a mile in everybody's shoes, and certainly, coming up when I did in the early 2000s, I think a lot of the guys that were retiring out was policing in the 70s. So I kind of caught some generational difference there in law enforcement. And so I can see how minority communities would perceive law enforcement, especially from maybe that era, you know. And, and so, and probably if that's the foundation you're looking at is from 30, 40 years ago, then, you know, that's, yes, I mean, there's probably a lot of distrust there. But also, you know, I feel like, and especially seeing the younger new recruits, they just, they, they just don't, you know, they're confused right now. If you, if you pull a 24-year-old, let's say a white deputy aside, and you talk to them about what's going on right now, they're confused. They don't, they don't understand it, because they have never, they don't see black and white like guys from 25 years ago or 30 years ago. They just don't. They're just not used to that. And so they're so confused, and I think, you know, generationally with these new officers, you know, the millennials, and now Generation Z and all this, I think that's just, it's becoming less and less prevalent because they're not hearing, they don't hear some of the stuff that we probably heard when we started our career with the guys that were rotating off as we were coming in, if that makes sense.
Makes sense. Thank you. All right, here we go. A lot of professions have yearly and bi-yearly continuing education. Does this, does the police force have similar programs?
Yeah, I think the chief mentioned a while ago. So, you know, we have to retrain every year. We have annual training, just like a nurse or a school teacher would do, and so we have, because we're, we hold a certification. So if you hold a certification, you have to go through annual training. And then, of course, if you have areas of expertise within law enforcement, whether it's DUI enforcement, or drug enforcement, or something like that, there's even more school and education opportunities that you have to go through for those specific skills and such. So there's a lot of opportunities out there, and I will say that there's a lot more opportunities now than there was 20 years ago for law enforcement training. Used to, you had to go to the academy for everything, and there's a lot of organizations out there that do specifically, you know, law enforcement skills. And so you can, the guys working, the guys and gals that are working now have far more education opportunities, and have taken advantage of far more education opportunities than they're used to be. That was probably a lot of the problem too, back in, back in the day.
Thank you. All right. When you have an encounter with a black male, what triggers and thoughts come up for you that you don't have when approaching a white male?
You know, I would just say, just because I've done this for so long, we know when we get out of the car, especially on a call, that people are sizing us up. It doesn't matter if you're black or white. There's two things already in their mind, especially if they've done wrong, and we're getting out of the car. Number one, they're trying to decide, are they gonna fight you? And a lot of times, it's how the officer carries himself. Is he in a sharp uniform? Is he driving a clean car? Does he present himself well? Am I gonna fight you, or am I about to run? And sometimes, neither one of those happens. The best tool that we have when we get out with somebody is our mouth. So, you know what Sheriff's talking about, we're doing that next week. It's called verbal de-escalation. You ever heard of that? Verbal judo, sometime they call it that. But, you know, you, how you talk to somebody is how that call is handled. Some people, you just can't talk to them. It's either a fight or a flight, but just treat people like you want to be treated yourself, and that's, you'll do much better.
Thank you. Here we go. Please touch on the effects of what would happen if the police department was defunded?
That's a tough one. You know, we were like struggling with our budgets already. I saw our budget last week, and I'm already over budget, and so we still got a little bit to go in June. So, yeah, we couldn't handle that. We need actually more money for, you know, kind of like we're saying, for training. For us just to meet our basic training needs, like driving, shooting, use-of-force training, de-escalation training, bloodborne pathogens, all the training that we do that's required, takes officers off the road, and you're either paying overtime, or you're doing comp time, which means that officer's off his shift, and we're short that day, or something like that. But we can't defund anybody in this state. We actually need more money. And I'm not gonna steal the sheriff's thunder here, but, so we partnered, not only in our county, but Oconee and Pickens with a crisis stabilization unit. So if we had a true mental health emergency, kind of like what the president has put out to partner with mental health, we're already doing that. We can call mental health, and, you know, it might take a while from the counselor to come from Oconee or Pickens, but we can get somebody. And I know Sheriff's doing that in his jail too, so.
My opinion on defunding the police is, you know, again, you get what you pay for. And so, you know, if you, if the local government decided to, you know, defund what we have operating right now, you know, I would say that, you know, it would, it would hurt, and, you know, it's an investment, you know. And one thing that I see our county doing right now is exploding, is exploding as far as people are moving in this county at a rapid rate, and there's a lot of business opportunities, there's a lot of job opportunities that's coming here. And, you know, me and county council, which I enjoy working with our county council, I think we have a very good one. The relationship between the sheriff and county council, I don't think has ever been better. But we will also butt heads at times, because I feel like you need security first, then you can work on all the other stuff, you know, all the other infrastructure needs. Minus maybe fixing the roads. The roads are bad. So, and they're knocking our police cars out of line and flattening our tires too, so, you know. But, yeah, I think, I think we're just now finally getting to a place where we should have been a decade ago, as far as the sheriff's office goes. You know, I can't speak for the city, but, yeah. You know, and I don't know what you would do in the place. I've heard, you know, vigilante groups and stuff like that. Well, that may work in one community, but is that vigilante group gonna police those other communities too? I mean, how's that gonna work? So, again, I'm a believer in law and order, if it's done the right way. And so I think that would, only hamstring, you know, hamstring is too bad.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Let's get here in the middle, so y'all don't feel lonely over here. All right. Here we go. What actions are you willing to take in the next 24 hours to move the needle toward equality?
That's good, because, you know, like I said, this is something that I've been trying to work on for three and a half years. And so I think that as the leaders of our respective departments, we have to lead by example. And I think that we have to, we have to show that we love and we serve everybody. You know, we don't just cater to a certain group here and there. We have, we serve all people. And as long as that's the mindset of the officers that are going out there and working the streets, and that doesn't, that doesn't mean you're gonna encounter an officer that's, he's been on 11 hours, he's tired. Sorry, I just, okay, that's my fault. You know, I think, and I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. That messed me up, really. So, but, where was I?
You were talking about how it doesn't, if an officer was working 11 hours.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you may encounter an officer that's been working 11 out of 12 hours and just came off a heated domestic call, and he's aggravated and stuff like that. That is, that is life. Just like we get out with everybody every now and then, and somebody's already mad because their marriage has been crumbling for 20 years, and they expect us to fix it in 20 minutes, you know. So, but I just think we have to lead by example, and I think that helps turn the needle. And I think we have to pray, and I think we, as churches, I think we need to come together and pray for our community. I would ask that, you know, you don't only pray for healing in the country, and, you know, for what's laid on your heart, but I really wish you'd pray for us, to be honest with you. And I'll be honest with you, I'm super uncomfortable right now. And, and, you know, this, I wasn't sure what I was gonna be asked tonight, and, you know, I keep going back to, I haven't, you know, I'm nervous right now, because I haven't been in everybody's shoes. And, and, you know, I wish you could see inside my heart, because I love people, and it hurts me so bad to see people distrust me, or us, or any, you know, in law enforcement. There's bad apples, I know, in law enforcement, and in every profession, you know. And of course, we happen to be in the profession that can take liberty in life, okay? And so it does make us a little different when people compare bad apples to, you know, bad preachers and bad teachers, you know, and everything else, because we certainly see our share of teachers molesting kids, and, you know, preachers using churches to their advantage, and, I mean, you just, the list goes on. And there's bad apples at Bosch, and AFCO, and all these other places. But I just think we, we have to work together, pray together, and be a community together, and not be so, and I think we're doing it here. I still feel a little bit, because I got some angry emails after Minneapolis, I really did. I still feel a little bit, because I got some angry emails after Minneapolis, I really did. I got some angry emails from people that live in Anderson County. And, and I tried to respond the best way I could, you know, I, I'm like, you know, hey, we're, we're doing everything we can to avoid, avoid those situations, you know. We haven't had, as far as I could go back was 29 years. And you know, and I, we have, our sheriff's office has not been in a fatal shooting of a blackmail in 29 years. But since I've been in office, we've shot five white males, you know? And, and I believe every single, I believe every single circumstances that I've seen has been justified and they, you know, they pulled a weapon on our folks, because I mean, let's be honest. If I come pull, you know, if I come pull a weapon on you unprovoked, I would think you're probably gonna take me out. Am I right? You're right. And you know, and those are the circumstances we've been involved in locally. And I just, I just hope people see that there has been a difference made. And I know everybody's not gonna buy in and, and believe that, but I, I feel like we've worked very, very hard to try to bridge as many gaps as we could. We can't bridge it all, but I feel like we've come a long way.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, here's a good one, maybe Chief, you can, you can answer this. What is the correct way that y'all are trained to take down people who don't cooperate?
Well, that can be any several ways, really. And, and that's kind of what the, the pyramid checklist, that has kind of been in the media a little bit. So the first time, like if you're going to jail, you're said, no, I'm not going to jail. First, gonna talk first, right? At some point I might put hands on you, soft empty hand control. And we have all these tools on our belt that help us. There, there's no certain answer for that. And I, I've seen that, I think that has been one of the questions asked, then why do we not go through all these, you know, tools on our belt before going to deadly force? Well, you don't know. So you know, as we step, there's a baton, there's pepper spray, there's the taser, and then there's deadly force. So the advantage we have in this state is that we're all trained at the same place. We're very fortunate, I think we're one of three in the country still that has a central academy. So whether you're, you know, city, county, state officer, you're all at the same place. Everybody's going to the same academy. So we're very fortunate, we're all trained the same way. Those, those are tough situations, you know, and probably three times in my whole career, I think I've faced deadly situations. One, I had two years' experience, guy was driving a stolen car and he tried to run over me. We were both very fortunate, because as I shot into the car, the steering wheel got the bullet. Unfortunately, he, his elbow cap blew off because it deflected. He took off again and I had to chase him. When we got to Metta Run Apartments, he had already ran, but there was pool of blood in the car. I, I'll tell you, I had a sick to my stomach feeling that you're in that situation and know that you just shot somebody. Didn't know how bad it was at the time. These are like moments that we have to make split second decisions. Other times, our worst calls we've gone are domestics. Caught a Hispanic male for 30 or 40 minutes. And you know, it don't matter what part of town you're in, this was on Concord Road. And you know, domestics are deadly. And it was all over, the wife wanted to take the clock radio and he said no. Jerked it out of her hand and knocked her down and the fight was on. Last one was, I believe it was a guy felt that his mother had disrespected him. She was elderly and he shoved her down in the driveway. Of course, he's going to jail. I didn't see it coming, got punched in the head. I, I got back up, got punched again in the face. The third time I came up, I had my gun in my hand. Guy backed off. You know, long story short on that, everybody went to jail at the end of the night, but we were out there for eight or 10 hours dealing with that situation. Those, those are just tough situations. You know, we, we try to learn as we get older, we gain experience about how to handle calls. I think for the younger officers, it's like Sheriff said, it's a tougher job right now. It's a tough time. They, we try to be mentors to them and have the correct field training officers to get them where they need to be. Just share with you, like last Friday, we have four rookies, hadn't even been to the academy yet. And we drove down to Holly Hill to pick up some new cars. And, and this is a diverse group, so we had two white males and two black males. And my wife, who's sitting out here, so she asked them more questions than I did. Like, are you sure you want to do this? You know, because basically, you know, not only the COVID, but everything that's going on in our community. And you know, you know, pardon, you know, Dabo, they're all in. Yeah, they're ready to go to the academy. And you know, I'm so proud of them because that's our future generation right there.
Thank you. Sheriff, you kind of touched on this a little bit, but the question is, how do y'all feel about the George Floyd incident that took place in Minneapolis?
So when I, so it took me about a day or two and, because I'd started hearing some things and you know, we have so much else going on. And then I had the opportunity to watch it and I think it was, it was probably the next day or that evening. So it'd been a full 24 hours since the incident happened. And, and honestly, when I was watching it, I was like, what is this guy doing? Take your knee off, take your knee off of him. I mean, that's, asphyxiation is, is kind of one of those basic things we learned in the academy 20 years ago, you know? And, and you could tell he was struggling and you could basically see the, you know, the life come out of him. And so I was horrified, I was, I, I couldn't believe it. And I was like, where's the, where's the other off, what are the other officers doing, you know? And I had to kind of go back and watch because I wasn't even paying attention to those guys who were just trying to keep people away and you know, stuff like that. I'm like, get, get them in the car, get them in the car, you know? And you know, I put out a post right after I watched it. And you know, and like the chief said, we all trained at the same place initially, which is great. You know, that, I think that, I, I think that's, one of the great things about our state is putting everybody through the same police program, initially the basic training portion of it. You know, then, then having to go, Georgia has probably five or six, I think, different academies they go to. So you know, they could be virtually different in this place than this place. But I was shocked and you know, if we have somebody detained, we're gonna put them, after we detain them, we're gonna put them in a position of recovery and then render aid if we have to, you know? And that includes, you know, I mentioned a while ago, we've had, had to shoot a few people and you know, unfortunately, and, and even in those circumstances, we've placed them in a position of recovery and rendered aid and you know, applied tourniquets, whatever the case may be. And, and that's, that's how our guys are, are trained. So I would certainly hope you would never see something like this ever happen again. I think there's gonna be, now, what you may not know, probably most of you know by now, is that was actually a, an approved technique within their policy at Minneapolis PD, which blew my mind because I'm like, how old is that technique? You know, that's probably from 50 years ago. Somebody need, you know, somebody should have obviously updated that policy. And because nothing will get you quicker in a lawsuit than if you don't have updated policies and procedures. And so, but no, I was just, I couldn't make any sense of it, still can't.
Thanks, Sheriff. You touched on this a little bit, it's funny, this is our next question. How can law enforcement police their own if they have fear that if they stand up against a fellow officer, they may not get backed up in a dangerous situation later on?
That's a good question, because when I was in Internal Affairs a decade ago at the sheriff's office, you would, you would see that. You would see people being afraid of being a whistleblower, tattletale, rat, whatever you want to call them. And as we've seen, the, the newer generation of officers coming in and especially after seeing, you know, George Floyd's death and that incident surrounding that and some of the others, I think that, I, I just, I really, I really believe this deep in the pit of my heart, that I don't think it's gonna be, I, I think officers will speak up. I definitely think that they will speak up. And not for just motivation because they're scared of going to jail, but I just, again, I think the, the moral fiber of the guys that are policing now is, is, is better. And it's, because they want to serve everybody fairly.
Thank you. Are those on the force who speak up seen as defectors? How do you address this mentality?
Well, you know, I kind of mentioned that, you know, I think in the past, they've been, you know, certainly labeled because 10 years ago, there wasn't body cameras. And so usually if there was a complaint that came to my desk, it was because either another officer whistleblowed, if you want to call it that, or, or a citizen had made a complaint. And so usually that was the only two means of knowing that there was a potential misconduct situation. And I, the way we see officers now, and I think that, and of course, training's gonna be very heavy on this subject matter, I'm sure even more than it already has been over the last two or three years, is there's gonna be, you know, zero tolerance for not speaking up and saying something. And so if you're looking at it from a internal or personnel or disciplinary side of it, you know, there is that motivation. Because if you don't, A, you're gonna probably go to jail, B, you're certainly gonna get fired. And so they're, they're motivated, if not by that, then obviously just good morals.
Awesome. All right, guys, it is seven, you had some, Chief?
The only thing I'd add to that, to what Sheriff said, so with us in Internal Affairs, you know, always say, saying that there's one set of rules for the public, one set of rules for police officers, and that is true. So when we bring someone in Internal Affairs, it's Garrity versus New Jersey, it's called the Garrity Rule. So a police officer cannot refuse to answer our questions. Now, what they answer can't be held criminally liable against them, but we kind of know that before we even bring them in there. If it's a criminally, you know, a situation where they violated a crime, then we're gonna notify another agency to have them come in. But that is one of the best tools we have is with Internal Affairs, that they have to tell us what happened. If it's a policy violation, they can still be terminated for the policy violation, but not held criminally for it.
So to piggyback on that real quick, just so everybody knows, because we operate the same way, is if you, if you have an officer issue and it's, but it's more of a personnel issue than you have internal, Internal Affairs may come in and investigate, but you still have SLED as a third party to come in if you feel like there's a criminal matter to investigate. Just because my officers are involved in a shooting and I call SLED in to come investigate as a third party, that doesn't mean I think that they had any criminal intent. Matter of fact, after review, I, you know, I, I feel like they were justified, but you want SLED to come in and verify and do their own third party investigation. And I know that sounds, you know, SLED is another law enforcement agency, but, but I assure you, you know, I don't know how SLED used to be, but I can tell you SLED right now is not, not going to, just say, well, it's a police officer, we'll let them go. I mean, they're, they just, I've seen, if you, if you really dig in and start looking at investigations throughout the state, SLED has made plenty of arrests of, of officers for misconduct or criminal violations.
Awesome, thank you, guys. It is 7:46 right now, so I think we're gonna answer just a couple more questions and then we're gonna open it up for y'all to take the floor and ask the questions that you have to Sheriff and the Chief here. Pastor Jason, is that good? All right. Here's a, here's another question, says, if a police officer is drowning and a civilian is drowning, do you save the easiest target?
Does that depend on your swimming capabilities, I guess? So to be honest with you, I'm going for the civilian first. So hopefully that police officer is, is trained enough to be able to, to, to save himself. But that's an impossible scenario, that's almost like the four-way stop and who goes first? Well, you know, when you have all the different government vehicles, well, of course, it's the post office gets to go first. But yeah, that's, that's tough. You know, we are geared and trained to preserve and defend civilians. You know, that's what we're, that's what we're supposed to do. And despite what your feelings may be for law enforcement as a whole, if you call us because somebody's kicking in your front door and they got you at gunpoint, we're coming to rescue you if at all possible. And we may end up in a gunfight with that person, I don't know. But the thing is, is we're, we're, that's how we're geared to, to operate is, is preserve civilian life.
Thank you, guys, I know that was a tricky question there. Do you, as our law enforcement leaders, do you interact with our state representatives about concerns for, for new laws to stop foreign funding or protests?
I've only had one instance where I got involved and so we had a law that was proposed by a state legislator to increase the fine, the limit to make a general sessions case. So we have cases that are heard at the magistrate level, but also we have states felonies, high-class misdemeanors that go onto general sessions. And they were trying to change the threshold of what a petty larceny was. And I forgot now, I think it was, it was some outrageous amount to get, anything under $10,000 would be tried in magistrate's court. And yeah, I'd signed on, on a petition with that, with several state representatives. It was through a property association, but it never passed, never made it through, so occasionally we did.
Tell me the question one more time, because I must have heard it wrong after I heard the Chief's answer.
Says, do you, as our law enforcement leaders, do you interact with our state representatives about concerns for new laws to stop foreign funding of protests?
Okay, yeah, so I, that hadn't come up, I mean, for me, so I haven't. But I, I do share with the Chief that we do interact with our legislators, because usually we're griping at them because of, you know, certain things that need to be reformed within our criminal justice system. But that topic hadn't come up with our legislators.
Got you, thank you. Here we go. Do you believe the county would be positively impacted by making all males serve two years in the military?
Whoa. So I, I served in the army and I'm sure we got plenty of veterans in here, if you will, raise your hand, because we appreciate you. All right, thank you. So I don't know, that's, that's a loaded, I would say for me personally, yes, but that's, I've been to Israel four times and if you live in Israel, then mandatory service, I think it's a three-year service obligation to serve in the Israeli army. And I'm gonna tell you, those, and, and Israel's a lot more diverse than you would, than you would think. And they work, it, it just puts an environment of camaraderie and patriotism within the country and all the different cultures and backgrounds and races that, that are a part of Israel. And so I, I've seen it work positively in Israel and that's a small, small country compared to us. But I don't necessarily think it'd be a bad thing, but that's, that's just because I'm pro-military.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next question is, what is Anderson County Police Department doing about systemic injustice or systematic injustice?
Well, I think we've touched on that over and over and I think when it comes to officer conduct. I think we have to utilize the, the systems that we have, have put into place. And I talked about early warning systems, I talked about how important it is to vet your candidates that are gonna come work for you. And I, I think it all, I think it all starts there anyway. And, and I think if, as long as you lead the agency well, they know your expectations, you're hiring the best potential candidates that you possibly can, give them the appropriate training, a lot of those problems solve themselves. Again, you're talking about a heart issue that you just, that there's, there's only one person in the world that can change a heart issue, we all know who he is. But you know, and there are people out there with heart issues, I've encountered them. I know y'all have certainly encountered them. And so it's, it's, but, but the thing is, is And, um, so it's, it's, but, but the thing is, is when you do encounter that within our organization, there's no room for it and they, they, you have to, you have to get them out. So that's how you deal with it.
Only thing I, I would add is, so just a week ago, um, we had this protest. It was handled peaceably here within the city. We did have another group come in after the protest, um, little issues, but not much, um, not, not enough to, uh, cause us any concern. So we're all, the next day, we're Thursday, everybody's proud of Anderson County. We all did a good job. Thursday night, we had a homicide right up here, um, White Hall and East North Avenue, senseless. Graduation party, got out of hand. Um, and what I understand, and the young people back there in the back listening to me, cause this got out of hand over a cellphone. You know, talk about systematic injustice for me is on the victim's part, you know? Again, it was a senseless killing. Um, the person that, this person was trying to shoot, didn't even shoot the right person. They got an innocent person, a 16-year-old. We, we went through this as a community, um, last summer with Janiah Scott, and, and here we are again. This is somebody that's eight years old or 16 years old. And I, I will tell you, and, and that's why I'm talking to the young people back there. You know, we, we have talked to everybody involved and nobody wants to talk. So we're gonna let this young man get away with murder, um, because nobody wants to talk or they want to cover for him. It's not snitching. If you're telling what actually happened for a crime, you're being a witness. You're not a snitch. And we have, we have avenues in place for that. Uh, you can try and call Crime Stoppers through the Fusion Center. You know, we put it out all the time, that 1-888-CRIME-SE. You know, just share, we're very close on that and, and to make an arrest, but, uh, that, that's where, and the Sheriff and I, we do this every year, candlelight vigils. Cause we see homicides, we see those families, we see them every year, uh, when, when we go back for this candlelight vigil. You know, so we almost become part of their families, cause they see us so much. But, uh, that, that's what we want to be there. That's what we're there for, is those victims.
Thank you, guys. I'm gonna go ahead and move over here to this side. As a youth pastor, that is, that's heartbreaking to hear another 16-year-old. We have two more questions we're gonna, we're gonna ask, and then we're gonna move to let y'all take the floor. Again, I remind you, uh, after, let's see, after, at the end of our last question, you can go ahead and start forming a line here and, uh, we'll, we'll be able to get to you. So this last question is, "If we were to ask for inmate's history of crime, would the consequences be the same for all races? Why or why not?"
I mean, that's a tough question. Um, I, I think when we go to court, um, everything is kind of leveled out. And you know, when you see, when you ask that question, I kept, I was kind of thinking of the statue with the lady of justice who's blind and weighing the scales. So, you know, if, if officer has prepared his case very well, then he's not gonna have a problem in court. If he's made a botched case, then when you, time you go to court, it's gonna be botched. You know, we, we always say the truth always comes out in court, and that's why. Because if, if you, if you don't have the case, you're not gonna do it. And if you have all the facts, then you should have, uh, no problems.
That is a tough question, but I will say this, there's so many different, there's so many different factors with that. As law enforcement officers, we have the burden of probable cause to make an arrest. Okay? So after we've developed probable cause and, uh, you know, whether it's, um, an arrest we, we've made on site or it's something we have to go to a judge to, to get a warrant for, we have to, we have to tell the judge, you know, what transpired and why we have probable cause, or what elements do, that make up probable cause to, to get that warrant. You know, from there, it's going to, through the court process, but I think there's a lot of factors there that's certainly beyond our control is, you know, is the person that's being accused of the crime, uh, you know, are they hiring an attorney? Or are they being given a public defender? Is the prosecutor on the case, a very aggressive prosecutor? Or are they one that just want the checkbox of guilty and they let the, the person go with time served and maybe throw a little probation their way or something? And, and so we, we see, and then, and then you have judges that are all different and they have their own personalities. And, you know, some judges are harder than other judges and it depends on what judge you go to. So there's, there's so many other, you know, factors, I think, you know, when, when it comes time for, uh, when the gavel comes down and a sentence is being issued, or a lack of a sentence is being issued or whatever. And it, it's just, um, I've, I've seen it a hundred different ways. So it's, it's hard to say from our perspective, I would say, uh, because it just, it all depends on the, the court.
Alright, this last question is, uh, from me personally. I had a lot of dealings with the law enforcement. Matter of fact, I was 17 years old in county jail when Pastor Jason came and shared the gospel with me. Uh, that changed my life. I was on my way down to SCDC and I took the Wild Way program. And, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure y'all are familiar with the Wild Way program. Changed my life. But I did have a lot of encounters with police and I always wondered about this question right here. There was a police officer that made this connection for me and him, and 10 years later, I'm his youth pastor. And I always wondered what made that police officer different from the other. And so I started asking the question, "Do you think after so many years served, police officers start to develop a callusis towards, um, feeling or really wanting to help?" For instance, I believe this officer might've been in there for four to five years, and I believe he still had this idea that he's actually like this hero here to help. When I've run into other officers who've been in maybe 20-plus years and they just, um, almost see me as just, here we go again, another one. His, uh, young black man, the potential probably is, he's gonna be in jail for the rest of his life. And so they, they don't even, um, really try to like reach me at all with something effective. It's just lock him up, send him to jail. So my question is, do you think there is, um, something that happens once you pass that certain year mark where police officers start to develop a, a callusis, if you will?
I, I'll say for myself, no, I don't think so. Um, I think I've grown as a person and I've grown spiritually. As I've gotten older, uh, it's, it's very, you know, odd. So the, the year I made chief, um, I also made deacon in my church. So, you know, I, I was managing two roles and, so this is funny. So my wife, she was the director of, uh, education and activities for our church. So she was pushing me, you know, go on mission trips and she wanted me to teach Sunday school. And I'm like, um, nah, I ain't got time for that. We wasn't married at that time. I say I ain't got time for that, cause you know, I'm staying busy all the time. And you guys just would not, um, understand sometimes, like, uh, the last week when we had the protest. I added it up between Saturday to that Saturday, I had 32 hours overtime. So we're doing a lot, so next week I'm off, just by the way. I'm available if you need me. But going back to your question, so, you know, I became a deacon. And, you know, I'm not the only one within our PD. We have a lot that, um, you know, we have some ministers in our church that on Sunday, they get up in the, um, pulpit. But, you know, I got to see a different side. Um, four years later, I made elder. So, so I have that, um, I'm still the same person, whether I'm at church, whether I'm at home, whether I'm at work, whatever. If you see me out on the street, I'm gonna be the same person, um, very approachable. The day that changed was very, uh, similar like that, and I've heard this from other law enforcement people. We had a trustee, uh, state trustees are, uh, actually state prisoners there in our jails. They have a little more, um, freedom, um, to be able to run the facility, uh, they work in our kitchens or, um, custodian or, um, laundry, whatever, but they have a little more freedom. And, you know, the, um, trustee is like, he asked me one day, he said, um, Chief, he says, "I see you do so much with your church. Can you tell me a little bit about God?" And I was like, wow. So, you know, I had that opportunity to share with him and you know what? So now, um, I'm gonna get up. So now he, he is out of prison, just like you. He has changed his total life and he is, uh, singing in a, um, Christian band. Yeah, still get emails from him. So, you know, I, I don't know about that. I think, you know, we talked about that, like, usually those type people, I think they weed themselves out. You know, Sheriff said, same, same as me, like when I started, there were those kind of officers. And I think, um, we are seeing the end of that era. They are, they are literally retiring and moving on. It's a different generation in law enforcement now. And I think what we're doing, again, like here tonight, shows that younger generation, you know, how we need to go forward. So.
Thank you, Chief.
I think the difference is, uh, because I got a little taste of the church world too, outside of law enforcement. And, and I'm sure all, both of you, especially as pastors and prob- probably even as the, the music leader here, it's, if, if you're doing something because it's a calling, you got a passion for it. If you're doing it because it's a job, you're probably not that passionate about it. And, you know, and we, and because of, because of that, and y'all have way more experience than I do in the church world, you see that with pastors too. I mean, you see, you see some at certain churches and a status quo, you know, just going through the motions and they've been preachers for 20, 25 years and they're just, you know, they, they feel like it's burned out just because they've lost their passion for it. So it, and it really, it, it could apply or applicable certainly to any profession, you know? If God's caused you to do it and he's giving you that passion, I think that you're, you're trying to go above and beyond your normal duties of just answering calls and trying to, you know, solve crime and that's, that's reaching out, uh, to, to, you know, young people or older people. It does not matter. Uh, when I, when I came in, uh, three and a half years ago, one of the first things we did at the jail was started the GED program. And we've graduated almost 12 people from the GED program. And of those 12, 11, uh, is, is, unless, unless somebody's dropped out that I don't know about, 11 of the 12 have pursued further education. And we're so excited about that and, and, uh, one of them went back to Lexington County and committed murder and he's back in jail again. So I hated that, but, um, you know, and we, I know the jail topic comes up a lot in Anderson County. So our jail was built in the 50s and, uh, it's not the safest of places to be in. And it's certainly, uh, uh, it's time for a new one. And with a new jail and, and a place where we can have more programs other than just the GED program, we'll have more opportunities to do some proactive measures too, uh, because I want to reduce recidivism completely as much as possible. And that's my passion. It's not, uh, you know, my passion is law and order and, uh, you know, trying, trying to, you know, provide law and order, uh, for God and this community, but also, uh, reach people that's normally not reachable. And we can do that, we just have to have the resources to be able to do it.
Thank you so much, guys. Alright, so that wraps up our questions for here. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Pastor Jason and, uh, we'll go from there.
Yeah, if we got some folks that want to take a, uh, a microphone, these microphones are hot and ready for somebody that may have a walk-up question. Is there anybody? If not, I tell you while, uh, why don't you find your spot? Tanya, I know you had a question or two. Do you want to ask while we're waiting on some people to find their place?
He asked just about every one of mine, but let me check. Um, but before I ask a question, um, one question that I asked was about, um, um, from your perspective, why do you think blacks and minorities fear cops? You answered it very well, by the way. Thank you for that. Uh, but God gave me like an analogy today for that, um, question. And it's because, it's like a marriage, he said, if you've been married to somebody for like 17 years, let's say, and then they commit adultery, then of course you're not gonna trust them anymore. And so once you lose that trust and that, that spouse forgives you, and then they cheat again. Okay? You forgive them again, but then there's constant proof that they're cheating over and over and over. And the wife or whatever, she tries to stay in the marriage, she tries to make it work, she tries to keep forgiving. But over time, she starts to build bitterness, anger and hatred towards the husband. And then when it's time for divorce, it's a nasty divorce. And so that's the analogy God gave me when it comes to minorities and cops. We see the same, um, show, we see the same movie played over and over and over again. And we are some forgiving people, but over time, we just lose trust. And once we lose that trust after 17 years of marriage, it's just over. We just ready for a divorce, you know? So that's, I mean, I, I can't speak for everybody, but that's just what God gave me. He was like, that's an analogy. He said, that's, that's how, um, that's how it is with the relationship between minorities, especially blacks, and the cops. You know, just to make y'all understand a little bit where we're coming from, because we see it happening over and over to us and nobody else has to watch that movie where, um, their house is accidentally broke, you know? Um, oop, we searched the wrong house and shot your daughter. We sorry. That doesn't happen to other races. Well, at least we don't see that movie. Um, or oops, um, we, um, I don't know, you know, all the things that's going on with the black. We just don't see it happening to other races. So that's why we lose that trust.
And I, I think that's a great analogy, and I would say this, that, um, there are, you know, if, if, using the marriage analogy, there's some bad marriages out there, but there's some good ones too, okay? And, um, just because there's some bad marriages out there doesn't mean that other marriages can't work and be 100% successful. And those relationships, uh, thrive and flourish. And so, um, I get it. I would, I would say, um, as far as the, like the search warrant example, yes, that has, and I promise you that has happened, uh, probably to, to every race and every, I, we've had so many case law studies with that. Because the dynamic, I think, especially now, you see it and it's, it's, uh, it's, it's obviously going to be, uh, put out in the media. It's, but I, I promise you this, it's happened in plenty of white neighborhoods, Hispanic neighborhoods too. And there's, I will say this, law enforcement officers, sometimes there's, that, there's ones that are downright bad and, and they need to be dealt with. Then there's also law enforcement officers that make mistakes. And sometimes they'll make stupid careless mistakes like filling out a search warrant and they get the wrong number, they write the wrong number down on the search warrant. Instead of 415 Smith Street, they wrote down 417 Smith Street, and then they take it to a judge, sign it, and then they give it over to the SWAT team guys who assume that this detective that wrote the search warrant has written it correctly, you know? And so they go in and then all of a sudden, because somebody's kicking their door down, the person on the other end inside of the residence is prepared, cause they don't know what's coming through. And, you know, and that, and then all of a sudden, you've, you've got a horrible situation because this guy over here was very careless and made a mistake, even just on paperwork. And it cost somebody their life. And then ultimately, it costs probably these guys a job, a career, uh, you know, uh, who, who knows? Because, you know, law enforcement, um, certainly, there's a lot of law enforcement suicides every year too, that people don't talk about. And, uh, there's a lot of hard situations. But I would say this, for all the bad that we have seen with law enforcement, we know, and, and we will continue, and it, the, the thing is, is this is not the end. Uh, we live in a fallen world and people are gonna either make, uh, intentional bad decisions or they're gonna make accidental mistake decisions. And they're, and, and as long as we still have to hire human beings, that's probably gonna, that'll always be the case. You know, if you put your faith in me, I'm gonna let you down. You know, there's no doubt about it. And if you put faith in, in the Chief, he's gonna let you down. And, uh, and that's why the one thing that unifies us is the Lord Jesus Christ, because we can put our complete faith in Him and we know that He is perfect and not gonna let us down. He's the only human being that, that has never let anybody down. And, um, but I appreciate that because again, you know, we want the marriage between us and the community healthy. We do. We want to maintain that integrity of the marriage. We don't, uh, we don't want to see, um, things. And I, and I promise you this, we may have people and the Chief may have people too, that are gonna make mistakes and, but you gotta trust us to know that we're gonna deal with it, that we're, that we will deal with it 100%. And, um, and that's our commitment to all communities in Anderson County.
Okay, now for that question I had.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause that was just to piggyback.
That was good. That was heavy.
Okay, now I've seen this myself personally in Anderson. I don't know if you was shared or not, but, um, up there on, um, Beverly Dear, it might not be Beverly Dear Shopping Center, but we're Hamrick's, that shopping center right there. It used to be like, uh, you know, minorities hanging out. And then all of a sudden, I'm not saying the cops told them they couldn't, but all of a sudden, they stopped. But then when a group of white kids, um, started hanging out, it was fine. They was there like, they were there like every Saturday night. So what, 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 what do you see when you see a group of black kids? So, what, 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 what do you see when you see a group of black kids that's a problem? Not you, but what is your department? And, and I asked the question about your thought. What are your thoughts when you see a group of black men or, or black teens or whatever? What thoughts go through your mind that's different when you see a group of, of, of white? Because, I mean, I saw it myself, you know, the black kids could not hang out, but the white kids could.
So, I will say that's in the city's jurisdiction. So, I'm gonna default to the chief, but we, we just don't, we don't have a lot of places in the county where you see, unless it's like a nightclub or something, we just, we don't have really a whole lot of spots that, um, maybe Old Navy in the QT in which, uh, you know, the property owners have asked us continuously. But, but, uh, for the most part, I think they're mostly white kids that are hanging out up there at Old Navy. And we have to run them off. Because the property owners of that, uh, strip mall or whatever constantly complaining about the donuts they're doing in the parking lot, the trash and everything else that is a result. But I think if those kids, those kids specifically that we're talking about at Old Navy, if, if they would police themselves up a little bit, pick up trash and stuff like that, Old Navy probably wouldn't have a problem with them hanging out. But Belvedere's deep in the city, so I'll let the chief handle that one.
Well, you know, I, I can't dodge that question because I'm definitely older than you. So, um, I was trying to think, how long has it been since kids have hung out at the Belvedere? So, uh, I, I don't know that like during tenure I worked in the city, we, we've ever really had that issue. It's just, it's not what the sheriff said. The, the reason the kids cannot hang out anymore at the Belvedere is that simple reason. Damage to the parking lot, leaving trash, alcohol. I, I don't know, that sounded like a specific issue, but yeah, over the years, we've just always cleared that parking lot. And, um, what we used to do is tell them to go to the civic center because that was in the county. But, uh, now that's in the city, so, uh, we don't, we don't do that anymore. But, um, no, I, I don't really see that for myself as a, a black or white issue. That is just something usually that, in certain property management, um, they, they just stay on us. Like, okay, so today probably would be the cookout. That's where after every Hannah Westside game, we hire extra officers for that. So, that might be a relevant one today. Again, I, I, there's such a diverse community, um, after a football game. And it doesn't matter if, uh, Westside wins or Hannah wins, um, everybody's gonna gang up at the cookout. We, we do put a little extra officers out that night and, um, basically to keep issues from happening in, in reality.
You want to lead us off there?
Oh, sure. Um, I wrote mine down, so I'll just read off of it. Um, it's, I was talking about referring to Sheriff McBride. You made a comment that the white newer officers, they are confused about like, kind of like what's going on. And I guess I can appreciate why they would be confused just because like the climate now is like so different. But like, I guess their confusion or, um, like ignorance of what's going on is kind of sometimes seen as like color blindness or anything like that. But it doesn't really seem like it's helping. It just kind of seems like it's sweeping things under the rug that have existed for a long time. So, what like tangible, uh, teaching, education, training do you think we could implement? That it's not, oh, they just don't know, like they just have never experienced it or anything like that, where it's, that's a little bit more passive to like, you don't know it, but you need to know why this is important. And this is like what, the action that we're gonna take? Like what types of actions do you think we could do?
No, I think that's fair. And I would say, you know, uh, not, and I would say just not the, not just the white officers. But, you know, we also have, uh, black officers, Hispanic officers and, you know, and I, I think they're all at this, this level of, um, they didn't grow up a lot like some of us grew up or even, uh, those that are older than us grew up. So, they haven't really experienced, uh, I think for those of us, and I, I like I said, I'm forty-one. And I've, you know, we, I've been around long enough and have seen stuff at school growing up and everything else. Some of those guys that, uh, are in their young twenties, they haven't seen a whole lot of that in school. And of course, you know, they don't teach history either like they probably should either, because there's, when you, when you, when you, the history books are getting smaller and smaller. And when you look at certain pages of history in the history books, you may get a page. I mean, it's just, you know? And so, a lot of that is probably, should be learned at school and home and everything else, even before they get out here to be police officers in the street. So, I think that this is a big learning opportunity for some of them. I think a lot of them's eyes are probably open that they're probably, that there, there is problems in certain places of the country that they've never experienced here necessarily. So, they're like, wow. So, that's a, that's a real issue. I mean, so I think this is, a lot of them are gauging this as a, uh, a learning opportunity. I think a lot of them are seeing, uh, the, I think they're seeing information from both sides of the fence. I think they're, they're more open also to see, uh, the feelings on both sides of the fence, I feel. Because they, they just didn't grow up in an environment where they, they saw so much separation. Because now the environments, they go, they'd go to churches like Rejuvenate Church in New Spring and they, and they just, you know, they're, it's, it's, you, you, they're just not used to the separation. And they're, the guys on the shift and the girls on the shift, uh, we have a lot more lady officers now than we've ever had too. And, and it's just, it's getting more and more diverse on our shifts and, and everywhere out throughout the sheriff's office. And they just, they have a camaraderie. What I'm scared of though, is, is it not being a black-white thing and it being a blue-black thing? That's what I'm scared the most of is the, you know, because I see Black Lives Matter, I see Blue Lives Matter, I see all this. And, and they're becoming, and, and the blue side of it is diverse, you know? And the Black Lives Matter side is diverse too. But I don't, I just, that's, that's the, that's what I'm scared of. Is, is there being such a, uh, a divide and, and so much animosity there that I'm scared? And I don't think it's gonna happen here, but I'm worried about these other communities we're seeing like Atlanta and Minneapolis and places like that where, you know, is law enforcement not gonna police those areas now? Because they're, but gonna be, there's gonna be so much confrontation? You know, and then what do you, and then what happens? And that's what I'm really worried about. Just the cultural, um, side of things. But I, I don't know how to explain it, but it's, it is when you talk to those younger officers, it is, they're just deer in headlights. Like, why? How, how's this possible, you know?
Just to follow up on that, like, so I know in an ideal world, the textbook would be bigger. But like, do you feel like there's a place within the, like, police academy or like training where it's a more like, may, no, maybe you don't know this, or maybe you guys all learn different things, but like, this is the history of policing in these communities. And this is why it's important for you to know it. Like, I, I get that it should have been done earlier, but now do you feel like there is an opportunity to do that?
I think there's an opportunity to do that. I don't think it's something that's really being done or has been done in the past at all. And, you know, ninety percent, and that's, the chief touched on it a little while ago, that's why it's so important to have good field training officers when they get out of the academy. Because, you know, you're, you're gonna learn the, um, you're, you're learning only basic training at the academy, basically. And when you get, that, where, where you really learn how to police is when you get out on the street with your field training officer. And that's why it's important to have good mentors as these field training officers to, to set these guys and gals on the right, in the right direction, on the right path. We used to joke around and said, uh, yeah, when, when people would get out of the academy, uh, we'd say, now forget everything you just learned at the academy. And here's your field training officer. They're gonna show you the real world. And, uh, but I, I think there's just opportunities for all of us to learn from each other. A lot of room, uh, a lot, there's a lot of room to grow. And there's a lot of conversations, I think, that'll be had. And I think training will intensify on, on many levels, I, I feel. And, um, so, and I, I think it'll, hopefully it'll get us to a point where we can, we can level out and, and people will have faith in their law enforcement agencies. And certainly want that for here at least.
Thank you.
We've got about eight minutes. If we can get these two done in about eight minutes, so we can get out of here. Go ahead, man.
All right, well, a quick backstory. About three years ago in twenty, yeah, twenty seventeen, this officer, uh, D. Hodges was called to my house. And I was in a biracial relationship, so I have like two kids, a, uh, white lady. And so, I was kind of paranoid about, and then it was an assault charge. So, I beat up her dad because he was being arrested. I was guilty at hand. But when the officer Hodges came, he had him and another officer there. And I could tell like he had, like, I'm not gonna say a fear look in his eyes, but he looked a little worried. So, I asked him straight up, can you take your badge off? And we just boxed because he seemed like he had an attitude with everything. The officer, the other officer said that yes, he could, but he said no. So, I ended up going to jail. Next thing you know, he dies in training. So, everyone that was arrested got to beat the case. Everybody in the courtroom literally left. So, to go to my question, I'm asking, if police officers were held to the same standard as Navy SEALs, do you feel that there was being many, like, on-the-job killings, like the whole George Floyd situation? I believe it was because he was, had more faith in his fear than actually faith in his skills to protect himself as an officer. So, do, I already asked the question.
So, when you're talking about the Navy SEALs, you, you know, there's a very, very small minute, uh, number of, of men that may, that go through, uh, and, and actually, you know, go through BUDS training. And then they become, after they finish BUDS training, they go on to SEAL training. And so, you're talking about out of thousands of people that go, and probably highly qualified, uh, Navy and Marine, well, mostly Navy recruits that go through that program, it filters out to be just a handful. And so, you know, in law enforcement, um, and I would say that there's, it's kind of certain levels of law enforcement. It's kind of like, if you would, special forces.
I didn't know that.
You know, there's, uh, you know, the guys that receive a whole lot more combat training, hand-to-hand, uh, training, uh, weapons training. You know, and that would be the SWAT team guys, you know? And they're, they're kind of that extra level. And they're al- also, you know, their physical, uh, uh, fitness capabilities are probably more so than the typical officer that's on the street. So, eh, you know, I would say that, uh, training is key in whether you're in the military or law enforcement. And the lack of training, you see problems like we're seeing around the country. And the more training that we can offer our, and this is why you don't want to defund the police. You want, you want to fund those training opportunities because you, when, when you call the police or police response to a call that maybe you're involved in, you want the most highly trained officer there. You don't want somebody that's been barely trained. And so, um, that is something that I think could improve. I think, I'm a big training guy. I love to train and I wish I had more time to train people because it's, it's tough because you gotta pull them off the street. And there's less people policing the streets while you're training them. But training is key all day.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Only thing I'd, I'd add is, um, the hiring process is, is probably more than what y'all think. As far as law enforcement officer actually getting in the door, you know, first it's a simple interview. You've got to pass that first. Then we give you a Nelson-Denny academic test. You've got to make, um, seventy or better on it, or seventy-five now. I think they increased it to seventy-five. That's basically to tell us, you can go down there for twelve weeks in Columbia, do the academy and pass. Um, you have to do a physical agility test.
Do you have the Believe in God?
No.
Okay.
Two minutes and four seconds. Um, and it's, it's a tough test. We do a polygraph, we do a credit check, we go out and talk to your neighbors, um, we talk to your past employers. You know, and the culmination of all that's a drug testing and physical. Uh, all that takes usually, uh, when we get somebody in the door, maybe four to six weeks to get all that done. We could start out with a group of like, uh, forty candidates and weed that down to six. It, it is tough to get these guys and ladies in the door.
Stanley?
So, uh, I first want to say thank you too for coming out here. Uh, we appreciate you, uh, coming in and answering our questions. Uh, the one question that I did have was, uh, the law is kind of like a three-pronged axis. Um, and I understand that you guys are there to execute, uh, laws that were passed by the state and the county. So, I just want to know, what would it take to get the, uh, legislative or judicial side to come out to something like this? To help, uh, answer for some of the other discrepancies that you guys can answer for, like with different sentencing? Or which laws should really be followed and things like that? Just what would it take to get them into this conversation and make it more complete?
I think you're doing exactly what Jason did, reaching out to me and the chief. I think, uh, reaching out to, uh, so we have five, I think, legislators in Anderson County and two senators. So, um, and I would, I would say that it'd be very important to have all seven of them, if you could, uh, you know, attend this. Or, uh, I think there's probably two or three legislators that would specifically cover the Anderson proper area. Uh, then one is up in Patersville and there's, uh, one kind of down around Belton and Honey Path. So, uh, but I think it's important, and they all have different views and opinions, because they fight like cats and dogs when they get down there at the state house. And, uh, but I, I think it's important to, to bring them to the table and let them have a seat at the table too. Because they do, they do make the laws that we have to enforce. And, uh, you know, and, and also, you know, I have to enforce, uh, you know, or, well, I can't enforce federal law, but I protect your constitutional rights as well as sheriff. So, uh, specifically, you know, what's, what's mo- most important right now is your first and second amendment rights. And, um, but I, I think, I think it'd be a good idea to have, especially your two state senators, you may can get more out of those two than you could five other representatives.
I'll work on it. I tried to make this happen, so we'll, uh, we'll work on it. All they can do is say yes or no. And I'll, I'll reach out to these guys here for some support.
Something you need to know though, your two state senators are the ones that, uh, appoint magistrate judges. So, the judges that are serving in the lower courts, summary court, magistrate level court, those magistrates are all handpicked by your two state senators. Or if they're grandfathered in and they, they come in as a new senator, they, they can elect to keep those magistrate judges. And those magistrate judges have a lot of influence and authority over our county. And they're the ones that set bonds when we make arrests, or the ones that sign warrants, uh, criminal arrest warrants, or the ones that sign search warrants. They're also the ones that sign eviction papers and lawsuit papers. So, I mean, there's a lot of authority that those two senators have just because they have the authority over the, your local magistrate judges.
We'll work to make that happen. Hey, I, I want to continue the conversation, so we'll work to get some more people on board that can, we can do this again. I, I want to, something that I, I heard earlier that I want to, really want to clarify, because I think it's a, it's really a great point. Going all the way back to the George Floyd thing, you brought up that the tactic that was used as a part of, um, old restraint policies that they have that you thought were outlandish. That's not something that's a part of South Carolina's or our policies here?
And it hasn't been as long as I can remember. Chief's got a few years on me, just, just a couple. So, he may remember.
I'll say I went through the academy in ninety-two, which is a while back, and it wasn't part of the policy then. Yeah, I, I don't think there's any law enforcement officer, at, at least in our area, in our state, that saw that move and agreed with that. Eight minutes, um, that's ridiculous.
Yeah. One more thing, bouncing off of Kelby's question. He talked about callousness building up inside of, uh, officers over a period of time. Do they ha- I know you talked about they having, uh, recertification periodically, but do they go through annual reviews? That, that also assesses their, their character, their demeanor, their, you know, uh, their mental acumen, whatever, along with their performance record?
Like the sheriff said, we have, um, early warning signs. Um, and, and we can pick up on stuff. When you work with somebody, and sometimes we're with each other more than we're with our own family sometimes. So, we can pick up on things. You know, you're being snippy, uh, you're late for work all the time, you're having anger issues, you're having use of force issues. You know, little clues, uh, we can pick up on that. And, you know, for all our employees, they have, uh, ability, before it gets to that point, we go through the employee assistance program and let us get you some help. If we can see that in time and, and we can salvage an officer's career and kind of what you say rehabilitate them, then, you know, I think sometimes those officers will make better officers than the ones that just come in and do their job every day. So.
We do, uh, performance reviews every year. And so, uh, their, their supervisor has to do a, um, performance review. And that's actually a part of our pay program, our, our pay, um, scale program now. So, if you don't have a satisfactory, um, performance review, you're not going to get a raise, basically, is how that. performance review, you're not going to get a raise, basically, is how that works, and we've had that happen a couple times, so, uh, we do those performance reviews, and we keep those on file, and, uh, and I'll be honest with you, they, they've been great in identifying um, certain hab, you know, habits or, uh, flaws, and, and, uh, you know, of course, not major ones, obviously, or we'd be talking about something different with them, but, uh, even, even tardiness, I mean, you know, uh, we have uh, four hundred and twenty, basically, full-time employees, so, you know, there's, you, you got one that's gonna be tardy every day, and you've got one that's gonna have an attitude, and, and one that doesn't call their victims back like they should by phone, and, you know, and those are the type of things that we, uh, review and assess, and try to work those kinks out.
Just real quick, short answer, so that they understand the ratio, square miles Anderson County has to be policed, and the number of Anderson County residents versus how many, uh, boots on the ground?
So, we have about seven hundred and fifty-seven square miles, um, and, uh, and a lot of those, a lot of those miles, especially around Hartwell, are hard to, you know, you may have one inlet that you're trying to get to, and you have to come all the way back out, and, and if you've been around Lake Hartwell, some of those roads, it takes a while to get from this, and you may be right next door to the next neighborhood, but, um, we have, uh, about twenty-three officers per shift on patrol, and then of course, uh, you know, I mentioned we have four hundred and twenty employees total, we have, uh, we also have a hundred part-time employees on top of that, which is our school-crossing guards and bailiffs in the courthouse. But we have dispatch, uh, all the investigations, narcotics, uniform patrol, uh, civil, civil process. A lot of folks don't know this, the sheriff is required to do three things by law, everything else is additional, and that is courthouse security, serving civil papers, and everybody hates those, including me, uh, and, uh, and basically the, the keeper of the jail. That's actually the only three things by law that I'm required to do. Technically, you could have a county, uh, you know, if county council decided on the police chief to come in for the county police, uh, they would take over uniform patrol investigations and all that stuff, so, a little different atmosphere.
How many city population versus officers?
I think, last I checked, and we do this when we do grants, um, I think the city's about sixteen square miles. Um, population's a little over twenty-nine thousand, but I would say, even though that's what it shows, like on Wikipedia, um, every day in Anderson, um, probably in our city limits, I guess, we have about seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
Um, most of the people that we service here in the city are not city residents. Um, whether it's a domestic, a shoplift, and a car wreck, um, everything involves everybody that lives in Anderson County, and immediate area, Coney Pickens, Georgia, um, we all do that.
Say this before we, we close, uh, he mentioned the, uh, citizen, um, program, citizens.
Citizens Academy.
Can, uh, candidate program, I don't know that this is necessarily open to the public, but as a part of the dream team, I got to go through the simulation, the simulator that their officers deal with, and I think things like that, you know, I don't know how that would be made open, but, but being exposed to things like that helps to, to, uh, at least from the, the community side to the law enforcement side, it helps give a little bit of access and insight into the, the scenarios and situations, uh, that they do experience on having to make rapid decisions when confronted with problems. And it does change your thought process a little bit, um, and, uh, so I would just encourage maybe exposing yourself a little bit, uh, you know, from that end, we're having conversations here, but on that end, maybe, maybe expose yourself to, to, uh, that side of things too. Um, so you can familiarize yourself with some of what's going through their mind. Um, do me a favor, really celebrate them for being here tonight. I know it's been a long, we've been here about two hours, and, uh, we actually have to be out of the building in about twenty-five minutes, so, um, let me pray, if I can, if you, you're free to go, uh, those that wanna stay, I'd love to pray over you really quickly, and, and we dismiss, so I'm gonna do that. God, I thank you for the opportunity to be together, I thank you, Father, for this, uh, community that is a family. Uh, God, I thank you, Father, for, uh, the men and women that are part of this community, the families, the lives, God, we thank you for them, we thank you, Father, for every person, Lord, that lives with, inside the perimeter of Anderson County, God, and, uh, Father, I thank you, Lord, for those that have been put in position to, uh, help keep them safe, and, and, um, lead them and direct them. And I pray, God, that there is a hand of grace that's upon this county, that maybe God has not experienced anywhere else, God, I, I believe, I believe we can ask for that, God, and believe that, Lord, that there is protection, that there is covering, that there is safekeeping, that there's a oneness in mind, there's a oneness in heart, a oneness in understanding, God, that allows us to, to operate cohesively together, the truth is, is that we're a lot of people living in a small place that have different perspectives, different ideologies, different upbringings, but God, let us work together under your hand, and under your grace and anointing, Father, to live together as a, as a family, believing in one another, and making sure that this place that we live in, this Anderson County community, God, is one of the best places, God, that you could ever live. I thank you for these two gentlemen, their teams, their forces, I pray the hand of God over their life, I pray, Father, that you give them the grace to do their job, I pray that you would encourage them, bless them, keep them, I pray, Father, that they honor, God, the citizens of this community with their lives, God, that they, uh, love them, that they serve them, that they believe in them, and they wanna see the best for them. And, uh, God, we thank you so much, Lord, that we can trust you in all things, we can believe in you in all things, and, uh, God, we, we thank you for tonight. Uh, bless, uh, everybody for being here, and Lord, uh, create the opportunity for us to continue things like this again, to make this place better. We lift you up in Jesus' name, amen. You guys have a great night.